More than the cost.
You're looking for the low hanging fruit, you know, you're looking for the obvious cases. You didn't point out, I mean, maybe the biggest success in the last 10 years is getting the boat removed from Roxbury Road down on that property. We all saw that houseboat for so many years and, you know, God bless the family.
Now I never know where to turn.
The patriarch had passed and so the sons were cleaning up the property. We were able to get it done without a lot of legal, but great success.
Right, it did not cost us anything and just, you know, a little bit of manhood. We actually got complaints because we had it removed. People felt it was a landmark and we actually had people call the office and complain.
Take it right after.
What are you doing? You're out of control.
Thank you.
Okay, once again.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you both.
Number 108, Ledge Light Health District.
The Ledge Light Health District is now in all 22 towns in our cog or county. The last town, the last holdout is Lyme, Connecticut, and they're coming aboard, I think, at the end of this month or the beginning of next. They do an outstanding job for us, Ledge Light, they do more than just sanitation, which was really our health department way back when, when we had Mr. Cawkins downstairs with a desk. There's so much involved now, including, you know, epidemic stuff and flu vaccinations, et cetera, et cetera. You know what they do and the list is long. I'll make mention that their budget is going down and the reason why it's going down is our population officially has gone down. And the reason why our population has gone down is the prison. We were paying and we still have to pay for the residents, temporary residents at the prison is part of the East Lime population. So when there's calculations such as how much we have to pay to cog and all the other fees that we pay as a town, it's based on a population that is the official population of the state, the head county for East Lime. We got a reduction in the male population at the prison, they're all gone now, and even the female population has been reduced. That's why you're seeing a reduction in your health district fees. Steve is at, he asked if he should come, I thought it was pretty self-explanatory, you know what the health district is and I can always have him come back if you really want to have a presentation and we could always have that someday.
I think the per capita salary on that page there that says that it's almost at the bottom of the list says that they're doing what they need to do economically. Any questions from the board about Ledge Light Health District?
I have a kind of a general question. There's a community health needs assessment, CHA, and an improvement plan, CHIP. So through these vehicles, has the organization identified issues really, really specific to East Lime that it then focuses on? I mean, I think the economic benefit of having the health district is great, but on the other hand, sometimes I wonder, are we, you know, if we have specific needs, are we really meeting those?
Are they serving our specific needs?
Yes.
If and when they come up, yes.
Okay.
And there are some examples that really shouldn't.
Right, you can.
Some issues had come up with people who've traveled out of the country and they were very, very, they were on the ball. They called me and then told me what was going on in town. I'll point out the opioid crisis in our country, in our region, and then in our town, if you boil it all down and then Steve and I had worked together, I had many conversations with Steve saying, it's your organization that has to drive this. There's nothing else out there. Don't go to the state public health department, they're not going to help us. So Steve, Steve and his team, God bless them, they rolled up their sleeves and they went after some grant money and there was a major presentation with Mr. Blumenthal, Senator Blumenthal today, at their offices talking about the opioid addiction abuse situation and what's going to happen in our communities, in our region to combat that and to put the public awareness out there, but also create the beds for people who are trying to recover, which is so finally important as well. They're also engaging on, in very specific to East Lime, Lyme Disease Prevention Task Force that they've just put together. I have a couple of people on our agricultural committee that are going to be representing East Lime for us, but it's a big deal and it's a big, it's ground zero here as we know, not just because of the name, it's because of the incidences. So right along the shoreline. So, yeah, they're very responsive and there's so much more than just, you know, going to restaurants and making sure their ventilation is approved and that they're, they get the science up to say employees got to wash their hands. It's so much more involved than that and they're leading the way, they do a great job for us.
Sounds good, thanks.
And we have two members on their board that.
Yes, we're represented as well, Kenson Stare.
Because of the population.
Susan Graham, yeah, of course.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you. We will move on to Smith Harris' house, 134.
Is there someone here tonight by channel? No. They have their board meeting tonight. So I can have them come back for specific questions if you'd like. I can explain a few things out. As you know, this is a small budget and it's very, fairly flat. They, we're seeking an increase in tour guides and the recording secretary line and also the curator line. There is one, there's one thing they're going to try to, and they made a big presentation, is it listed in here, Anna, on this new, the implementation of a significant museum-related policies procedures, including a code of ethics, that's not it though.
That's what the Sam Smith house, that was John Johnson, no?
Well, this is, this is, yeah, you're right, yeah. Smith Harris would be different than the historical properties or, yeah. That comes up in another budget. So they have, as you know, a curator, they've had one for a while. This woman is amazing treasure. We can only afford $6,100, $80 a year. We'd love to triple the time that she spends. She works for all three houses now, it shows up in this budget, but there's already a collaboration between the three historic houses in town, especially with Samuel Smith House on Plan Stan. But, you know, good things are happening out there. We have a great group of dedicated people who are trying to keep this alive. One item I suggested, and I'm going to bring it to the board of selectmen, it might be somewhat controversial, it has been in the past, they have a great facility out there. They have a barn out there that is ripe for these modern day weddings. And we have a policy in town that says no alcohol in town properties, which is, prevents them from renting out their space and creating, creating a revenue source. If it's done correctly in this day and age with, you know, hired bartenders and people serving with tips certified and, you know, it not being a motorcycle kegger, but a high-end wedding on the property, it is allow, it's allowable only by exception by the board of selectmen and I'm going to be speaking to the board of selectmen about that next Wednesday. There is potential revenue there. We're in dire times with budgets and we will be for several years, yet that property can probably generate a little bit more income to keep itself up so we can maybe reduce the budget in later years and have them be self-sustaining.
Thank you for asking my question because that was going to be my question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd love to ask it.
No, for all of these, I mean, I went through and looked at revenue and it just, it feels like we've got to start pushing on that side of the rope as well because we've got to somehow or another make this whole thing work at the end.
There's this whole, there's a whole museum, library, you know, give back to the, you know, the cultural thing that you're not supposed to be overcharging and keeping people away, however, there is that revenue source and that barn is beautiful and we all know, we've been to weddings on, in vineyards and things, there's a trend to not always have it at the country club, you know? It's an opportunity here for our town.
Nope, I've been in events at both the barns and the house and I think they're both beautiful. Any other questions?
I don't have one. I know in the past, the stumbling block for these events on town property was liability. How are you going to deal with that?
You deal with it with a certified bartender and caterer that comes out with a DRAM policy, which is the alcohol policy and it would be the first line of defense on that.
So that's.
We would require.
You have a policy for every event or is it?
Yeah, for every event, for every event, there'd be a, there'd be a liability policy required, a certificate of liability and we could come up with those kind of rules, you know, and a rule would be, don't, you can't have alcohol on a table, serve yourself, it has to be served to you through a bartender who's tip certified and a company that brings in the alcohol and takes it away, patrons can't bring in their own. You can control very easily if you do it right and it's a good group of people that I know that will do it right.
Okay, thanks.
Are you saying, Mark, that the, that if you were to propose this to the board of selectmen, that they have the ultimate say, it doesn't have to go before zoning or?
No.
So.
The policy is no alcohol in town properties except by exception to the board of selectmen.
Right, but there's no, but it's not really zoned for commercial use currently?
I don't know what it's, what the zone is, it's not residential.
So I'm just curious why other properties in town that would like to have weddings on their property do have to go through the zoning commission, but not this particular property?
Again, this, I don't think that is, I don't think it's zoned residential, it's not a residential neighborhood. We have, it's a municipal neighborhood if anything and the industrial park sits behind it. So it's a little different than a barn on a side road surrounded by neighbors with no parking, you know, this also has a facility where you can park cars and next to a municipal building that has parking as well. A little bit of a difference there.
But I think the message is you're going to have to do due diligence and go through and make sure that you do have everything covered.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I'm all set.
You'll say.
Yeah.
All set?
Question's answered.
All set?
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Smith Harrison, Smith Harris, I always say Smith Harrison, but that's okay. Number 217, Niantic Fire Department.
Chief Wargo is here. Chief Steve Wargo is a full-time firefighter in New London. He's a volunteer to our fire department and currently the chief. And he runs a great department and he and, you'll meet Bill Ricks next from Flanders, they're working in concert together quite a bit, much more than ever before and we'll go over that at some point in the future agenda as requested. This budget, in spite of it being a significant shortfall, I think, this past year because of the way we budgeted and cut out certain things, the bottom line is they're, they're looking for an increase of only 1.4% in this budget line and if there's any questions or, Steve, if there's anything you'd want to introduce first?
Sure, like Mr. Nickerson said, you see the increase here for salaries for firefighters. We were shorted last year, so this is contractual obligation for my four full-time firefighters. You also see a little bit of a decrease in longevity. I have a retirement this Friday, so the new hire will not get longevity for a couple of years. Further down the road, vehicle maintenance is an increase from $20,000 to $25,000. My oldest piece of equipment is 27, going to be 28 years old this year and since July 1st, I've spent about $8,000 hours of maintenance just on that one vehicle, so we're just trying to keep that on the run, keep it safe. Radio maintenance is going up $300 from five to eight, that's just to buy 10 replacement batteries, which I've been doing on a rotating basis to keep our batteries fresh and building maintenance has gone up 1,000 from two to three. I've got two buildings, one is 60 years old, the other one is 44 years old, so that's just for daily upkeep to keep the place up and running. Other than that, everything else has pretty much stayed the same. Not asking for the world, just trying to keep it simple and keep it running, so.
Do you know, do you know how much the budget is in the world, just curious?
I'm really not sure, but like 90% of its salary, it's, I want to say full-time. I want to say $8 million maybe and the majority of that, we've got almost 80 full-time staff, so.
Wow.
Yeah, four shifts of 16 plus secretary on the fire marshal staff is about, just about 80 people, so the majority of our budget goes to staffing.
Different scenario.
Big time.
Okay, questions from the board?
Just one question. The overtime item, 614, it's, there's a decrease, so that's wonderful, we're always happy to see that, but is that sufficient? Will you, will you need to come before us again?
That money is, I believe, Anna, that's for the full-timers, for their money, their 45 hours a week, their five hours overtime per week, that's where that comes from.
And then any, any other overtime?
And the other overtime is also in there too, okay. Because we did come and ask for some a couple of weeks ago and that was because of shift coverage, storm coverage, things like that, that wasn't overrun and also my part-time account for payroll because of filling in for the full-time spot, but.
Do you feel the $67,000 is adequate?
For now.
Overtime line?
For now, yeah.
Barring any major.
Because you really, there's some things you just can't plan for, so.
Okay, that's it? Okay. Give me all the questions.
Nope, all set, thank you.
Okay.
Lisa. Hi, Steve.
Hi.
First, thanks for your service to our town, I'm grateful for someone.
You're welcome, thank you.
Have you read the recommendations on the fire study?
We have, all of us as a group have gone through it.
All right, so what of these are you currently working on?
Right now, there's about five things, like the first five, most of them have to do with the fire marshal's office, with plan, reading, review, building inspections and things like that. We're working on that with Chris Taylor taking over, we've been able to accomplish a lot lately and one of the big projects coming up is a school project, which is going to be starting in June. He's providing us with plans with all the work that's going to be going on, we'd be going through building walkthroughs and stand up on top of the projects. For, right about now, that's about it. Chief Ricks and I have worked a little bit on rural water supply in the areas in town where there's no hydrants, how to establish a water supply if we have a fire, getting water there and things like that. We have started chipping away at the list.
So one of the, number six recommendation on the list is a bulk purchasing program for the emergency services should be created to achieve economies of scale. Are you chipping away at that? What's, what's your thoughts on that?
That's something we could probably do, we could sit down and talk about, yeah, if we need to buy a bulk purchase of fire hose or things like that, we could probably go in and things like that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking though, this is like a year old, I would have expected that we would have looked at it before now and been able to come forward with some savings on those, that's really what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Are you able to tell us any of that at this point?
Not really.
Any substantial savings out of these recommendations?
Not yet, because like all those other items are a no-cost item, it's just the personnel issues, we're dealing with things and working together as department. We have not worked, looked into bulk purchasing or anything like that, we have not approached that subject yet.
You do OSHA together?
We do do OSHA together.
Certification again, those are your big items. Your certifications when they're coming in to do the ladder tests and all that stuff?
Yeah, we use the same vendor, things like that.
We didn't do that two years ago.
Yeah.
As you see, they don't have a lot of equipment here and we don't have any capital on the books for this coming year and I think we struck it all down last year as well. So there's not a lot of hard goods or soft goods, if you will, being purchased by these fire departments.
But we did just talk about buying batteries, for example, right? If they, if they're common.
That was $800.
Yeah, I'm betting if they're common batteries between different departments, it's an opportunity to look at buying bulk, at Lisa's point, there's, there's always, is it $50, man? It's $50, okay.
Well, I'm thinking more than batteries. I mean, I don't know enough about the details because it's not my area of expertise, but I'm assuming that the guy that did, that we paid to do the service would know. I don't know if it's SCUBA equip, or whatever you call it, SCBA.
We all use the same vendor.
Yeah.
For all of our fire hose testing, our aerial ladder testing, our SCBA testing, we're all using the same vendors. We're not going to different companies.
Yeah.
We all use the same vendors.
I guess what I'm wondering is since we did, since we paid to have this study done, what savings have we realized? I mean, one item here on item seven is a full-time career fire chief should be hired and put in charge of both volunteer fire departments, EMS, fire marshals, and emergency management. And so, what's, what's the status of that?
We're not, we're not hiring a full-time fire chief. You're looking for savings.
Yeah, right.
Not to spend another $110,000 on another head department.
No, but we have fire chiefs at both.
Unpaid.
Unpaid, okay.
Volunteer guys.
All right.
So, so, you know, and of course, right, these are volunteer crews here.
Okay.
That don't necessarily work for the first selectman technically, you know, you work for your guys who hired, who, who put you up for that job.
Yeah, I'm really talking high level though.
Yeah.
If we had this delivered a year ago, I would imagine we would have reviewed the recommendations and had some savings that we wanted to put forward to the board by now.
It's not necessarily savings. So we really should do this on an agenda item in that regular meeting, we talked about it, it'll be on our next regular meeting.
Right, but I would be remiss if I didn't address this while the budget was being presented.
Sure, absolutely, I'm not stopping you from doing that, I'm just saying that the discussion's got to go down the road of, we're not going to probably save money because of the study, but we're going to have a better idea of how this, this function is. In some ways that we can be more efficient, there'll be some savings, but if you start adding in the fire chief at 110-plus benefits.
That was my, my mistake.
No, 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 it wasn't a mistake because it did say that. So then I had to step back and make a conscious effort to say, decision, is that, is that for the better of the town or not?
Well, no, that one isn't, but, but if we look at how many are here, there's 21 recommendations.
There are others similar to that that aren't.
That's okay, even if we looked through this and said, you know what, there's three here or four or whatever they are and these ideas make sense and we got the report a year ago, we're going to do this by now and this is the kind of money we could save. I mean, I would hope that's what we would expect out of an optimization study.
Anything else?
I don't know, give me a minute.
Well, she's thinking, you got a question, John?
Yes. I noticed it says you have four full-time.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't say how many part-time.
I have nine part-time firefighters.
Now between the part-time and the full-time, on that overtime line? What's the breakout between the two? How much overtime for part-time, how much overtime for full-time?
Not so much overtime for the, for the part-timers, the part-timers pretty much is covered by the part-time salary. We make a lesser rate.
Okay.
So the only time we'll get overtime is if we work over 40 hours per week, which we usually don't.
So that's minimal for the part-time?
Correct, yeah, majority of that is for the four full-time firefighters.
Thanks.
Sure.
That's all I have for now.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So the vehicle maintenance is the fire trucks and then the SUVs or?
Strictly the fire trucks.
Strictly the fire trucks.
Yeah.
And that's not done in-house, that's done, you?
Bring in a certified mechanic, correct, yeah, and they have to be going through every year, bumper to bumper, oil changes, brakes, all that kind of stuff. So I have three engines, a ladder truck and a rescue truck that's serviced by that and if there's any repairs that need to be done. And then the OSHA count, every year, the ground ladders, the fire pumps, the aerial ladders, all those have to be tested and certified along with a breathing apparatus, so it's an ongoing thing. You can't skip it, you've got to have it done every single year.
Yeah.
Because if something happens and it's not certified, we're all in trouble.
And all the firehouses have to do it and it's not really an item where you can get economies of scale, they charge actually $100.
And the vendor that we use, actually we use the bulk vendor for, the same vendor for maintenance, they do give us a break on parts and labor and things like that and they're great, you call up the phone and they're right there for us. In fact, one of the mechanics works in town, so it's, it's really good.
Thank you.
Sure.
So my question kind of combines both fire departments. When I compare the two fire departments, I see that Flanders has, all their fuel is transferred to the ambulance association, but Niantic doesn't. Are you familiar with that and can you speak to that? If not, I'll wait, I'll wait.
What's that? Just as like including propane and things like that. The ambulance association will cover.
100% for me, but.
So that's.
Prior, prior to last budget, we were only covering diesel and then during the year with the budget shortfall, it was funny, we were getting, the ambulance decided to pick up everything and then we, we asked this year, the upcoming budget, we said we'd pick up everything.
I know, we changed the language.
Thank you.
So that, that could be removed at 3,000.
That's great.
Thank you.
East Lime Ambulance is covering all of that, so that can be taken out.
Okay. You talked about the overtime, that's my only other question, thank you.
All right, sure, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks for your time.
Good Flanders, 218, thank you.
Bill Ricks is our, is our chief, he's a full-timer elsewhere and again, this is all a volunteer basis, are you a junior technically?
No, I am not a junior.
Well, I, I guess I never, I couldn't have asked you that private, obviously his dad is a full-time fire, fireman, paid fireman at the Flanders house as well, so not to confuse you, he also goes by Bill Ricks.
Younger and older, he's a junior.
Smarter.
And you can't go down to Niantic?
What's that?
And you can't go down to Niantic?
No.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, I guess I'll just run down the items for you. So the full-time 40-hour account, we have 181,000. The part-timer account, we have 103,000. The full-timer overtime account, we have 62,000. The longevity is down to 1,800 because we lost a full-timer, so we rehired another one, but he won't receive longevity for another couple of years. OSHA stayed the same at 14,000, our vehicle maintenance went up to 19,000, radio stayed the same at two, building stayed at three, small equipment at two, training and fire prevention is still 4,500, telephones are two, our uniforms, again, I'm asking for more per part-timer because these guys are wearing 10-years-old uniforms for 4,250. Miscellaneous supplies is still at 1,500.
Questions from the board?
Yeah. Hi. So let's talk about overtime.
Okay.
Under the note, we have, again, last year's overtime number of 45-5 does not add up to the town's current full-time contractual obligation of scheduled hours of overtime.
No, it doesn't.
So help me understand that, we, we.
So last year I asked for 62,000 and you guys decided to give us a 0% budget and I said last year that the 45 that was in there wasn't enough to cover them contractually. Contractually, they need?
Well, yeah, let's talk about the contract. So we contract with our guys that we get, how may I understand how this works? We tell them there's a certain amount of overtime, they're guaranteed?
They work, they work 45 hours a week minimum, plus if there's any fires. So they're guaranteed one hour of overtime per day.
So, nobody likes this conversation, all right? Let me just say that.
No, I understand.
But why, why are we guaranteeing five hours a week overtime? Help me with that. I mean, I love you guys, I love you guys.
This is what I inherited from.
But help me understand this.
From decades ago.
That's been a contracted item since before I started in this, so at least 20 years.
That's not really the answer I'm looking for.
I'm giving you the best that I have.
But the answer is the way they cover their shifts and it's that extra.
They work, they work a nine-hour day.
Okay, I get it, whether you call it 45, I know, I, the question I'm really asking is why are we doing that? I mean, we are up against the ropes. We can't, I mean, we can't say, well, we've done it that way forever, so that's why we're doing it. We got, we got to look at that, that's a chunk of money right there and I don't want to cut anybody out of any salary, I mean, I really don't, but if you're sitting up here in my chair, you're going to be asking the same question, I can guarantee you.
And I understand it, I do believe though, if you took that five hours away, you still can't take their base of pay away, which that's always been, so you're going to pay them on one way or the other, where it's coming out of an overtime account or you're going to up their salary. I have nothing to do with the union contracts, I'm just, from how I understand it, I'm just trying to.
Mark, help me out with this.
It is kind of convoluted and it grabbed me by a little bit of surprise too. They stagger the guys coming in and leaving, which opens up the coverage for, we, listen, we don't want to hire more full-timers.
No, I get it.
So, so I think one guy comes in from nine, seven to four, the next guy is eight to five, the next guy is nine to six and what that does is gives us more coverage with full-time EMTs.
Right.
That when the ambulances are running and fire coverage.
But we just don't have the luxury of doing that. We don't.
Well, overtime isn't always a bad word, especially when you have to go out and hire somebody to cover the hours.
Is it straight time overtime?
Overtime.
Is it straight time or time and a half?
Time and a half.
We need to look at this.
The next contract comes up with the fire guys, is it this year? We can make a proposal, we'll have to buy it, we'll have to...
Is it every two years, Mark? Or four?
They set the, the last one was a one-year contract.
It was a one-year extension, so...
So, even though this has been happening for twenty years, we have the opportunity to address it every one or two years.
Or three.
Yeah, whenever the contract expires, I don't know what they're...
Right.
I mean, I'm not going to make any friends doing, saying this, I already know that, and I'm sorry. But it, it really has to be looked at. And what, what I would love is a tickler, we talk about ticklers, so we don't lose this, so that when this item comes up, we know to ask, what's the status of it? Have we looked at it? I mean, it, it's a lot of money. And, and, I'm sorry, but we really got to look at it programmatically. What can we do to ensure this doesn't fall through the cracks? So that we know...
What we will lose is, what we will lose is prime coverage during certain hours. What we'll gain is a couple of dollars, absolutely.
It's not really a couple, and I'm not, I'm not saying that I know what the answer's going to be, but what I'm saying is, we need to roll up our sleeves and look at it.
We have.
Well, you just told me it grabbed you by surprise also.
When I first saw it, four years ago.
Okay, so we need to look at it again, I would think, right? It's a chunk of money.
We'll go and make a proposal.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we have to do that.
Okay, so, so we have right now an agenda item that's in our tickler that we're going to start creating a regular real file, I mean, a real agenda two, and we can add overtime to the salary work that's currently being done. I don't think here at this meeting, we're going to be, I think we all think that there's probably a better way to finance this as overtime. Understand that right now, it's part of their compensation. But next contract, or throughout the contracts, we're going to have to see if we can somehow or another, see if there's a more cost-effective way to do it.
Would you be willing to sit in on those contract negotiations, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know when they are, I can't speak to that. I typically...
Coming up this year.
Yeah, I mean, if you can tell me when they are, then I can try to attend. Typically, they're like during the day, or two o'clock in the afternoon. But I can try to see what I can see. I'm not opposed to sitting in if I'm available.
I mean, it's just that we're losing money from the state, and I, I mean, I love you guys.
No, I understand, I've already had to cut almost twenty thousand dollars out of my budget this year because of that, and we're making do, but...
And we've been talking about...
We also need the manpower, that's one of the biggest things that that study showed, was we don't have enough as it is.
So, I would imagine that we would look at that and see what the right answer is. I'm not saying to triage it, I'm saying that we can't say that because we do it all the time, we're going to keep doing it.
I, I understand that, but I'm basing my numbers off of what their contractual salaries are, and the realistic hours that they put in, and I'm giving you the bottom line of what I need.
Which is why I come back to the volunteers again, and what can we do to recruit more volunteers?
We are out there doing mailers, flyers, open houses. It, it's not just us, it's everywhere.
It's not just you.
Right, it is everywhere.
We're doing the best we can, we're actually working on a...
My brother's in your job, and he has the same problem.
We're working on a possible tax break, once it gets to you guys, hopefully you'll, you'll push it forward for volunteers that live in town, so...
My next question would be, same question I asked Steve, have you had, I forgot your first name.
Bill.
Bill, thanks, Bill.
I'm used to forgetting, sorry.
If I forget it, it's a bigger problem, but it's okay.
I'm sorry. Have you reviewed the recommendations list from the fire study?
I have gone through that entire hundred, or two-hundred sub-page item.
Okay. What are your thoughts? Did you find some low-hanging fruit here?
No, I believe a lot of the stuff, we were already doing, it just wasn't documented. Like, the going out on inspections, our full-timers were doing that. There was just no actual written reports of it. That was number one. Number two, for the most part, any big projects, we did accompany the fire marshal, and like I said, Chris taking over now, he's keeping us in the loop with all the school projects. Joint training is number three. We've been doing that ever since the study came out. And before that, not as regularly, but every month, we're doing a joint training, whether it's at our end of town, or this end of town.
So, how much would you say you saved by implementing that?
There's no money costing that.
Oh, no money.
So, the only money savings you're going to see, and you keep bringing up the bulk purchasing, we're doing that. We buy the gear from the same vendor, we buy our hose from the same vendor. It doesn't matter if I buy ten links, and Steve buys ten links, it's the same price, whether we buy twenty. We're already getting the best deals as we can as far as purchasing. Now, a bulk purchase that, you will see cost savings. He needs a fire engine, and I need a fire engine. We've both been able to push it off in the CIP for, I believe, another year, just so the town can keep running, but we're dumping thousands of dollars into these rigs. You saw, his vehicle maintenance went up, mine went up. For the most part, we're having the fire apparatus dealer do our work, and to save money for us anyway, I've been having the town mechanic do stuff that he's certified to do, so we're not paying the inflated labor costs out of the, the other person that we use. But he can't work on pumps and ladders, he can only do the general maintenance stuff. So, we're saving money. It's the only bulk that you're going to save, though, is big purchases like fire apparatus. The other big dollar items, like I said, are the gear, hose, and we're already buying that at reduced rates, because we buy from the same vendor.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know if other local fire departments have, or other towns have certified mechanics that can work on the pumps and...
I don't know.
You wouldn't know?
I, I know our mechanic said to me, you know, should I go get certified? I said, I wouldn't do it. He's got a full plate as it is up there, with the dump trucks and everything else.
Unless you see that as like a big city fire department.
That's what I wondered, economy of scale, how big do you have to get before you're there? Okay, it's not cost-effective to certify and maintain certification, and, okay, thank you. Did you have a question?
I do.
I thought you might.
So, with the shared services that you have with Niantic, it looks like you, your budget is absorbing a disproportionate share of the expense. So, for example, if I look at the OSHA budget, the total budget is twenty-seven thousand, and you're picking up fourteen of that, that's fifty-two percent of that particular budget. But if I look at, say, just the salary line item of the Flanders budget compared to the total fire department budget, you only represent forty-three percent of that. So, my question to you is, do you feel that these costs are properly allocated between the two departments?
Yeah, I do. For, like I said, for, so we had to take, when we had to take these cuts for, for the budget crisis that's going on...
Right.
My testing has, is now getting pushed off. It's going to get tested this year, but we're going to get billed in the next budget.
Salary account, he has three full-time firefighters, I have four. So, there's, there's the difference right there.
He has two buildings to maintain, I only have one.
Right, but you're picking up, it seems to me like you're picking up a disproportionate share of those expenses for OSHA, because you have a smaller fire department, but you're picking up a bigger share of OSHA.
For the fours, thirteen thousand, for the three, fourteen thousand.
Right, you see what I'm saying, Jason?
That, all my, all my testing comes out of that, and there's not much left at the end of the year, so you're more than welcome to come to the firehouse and go through my books.
No, no, I'm not.
No, I, I don't, I don't have an answer off the top of my head for you, that's why, like...
Okay. Steve, do you happen to have, do you happen to understand that question, or have an answer for me?
I don't have an answer for you, I mean, it's, it is what it is. We've listed what we use the accounts for, and like Bill says, at the end of the year, I don't have a lot left over, so...
Yeah, okay.
And the line item, we're going to take your money from somewhere else to pay the bills, so...
Okay, so, it's, it's difficult for me to actually think about the numbers in the presented budget, because I'm waiting to see what the original fire study, the draft version had said. And once I compare the draft version to what is up on the website, I would be better able to address this information. So, I can't do that right now, I'm waiting for that. But when I read the fire study as it is presented on the website, it seemed to me that there was a, a lot more activity of our firemen going outside of East Line versus receiving help from surrounding communities. So, is that the best model, in your opinion, to have this shared kind of collaborative assistance for no exchange of budget or fees?
We have a signed agreement between all neighboring departments. If they need help, we go, we need help, they come. Every work in fire we have, immediately, we call the outside departments to cover our firehouses, and if it's that big, then they just come right to the scene. So, we're utilizing them. I don't know why the study didn't show it that way, but we are.
No, 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 I, I see that you are utilizing them, and I see that they do come.
You're saying that we're going outside of town for service, providing a service, mutually?
You are providing a lot more services to surrounding towns than we are receiving, according to that study. Sure, Chris.
I don't know, I don't know. Is that, is that in that list? I have the list.
Yeah, can you, can you give the, just for the record, give your name?
Sure, Chris Taylor, Fire Marshal, with Flanders.
Thank you.
I truly feel, during the process, I met with them, maybe for twenty-four hours, a lot of the information that we gave to that company doesn't portray what we got back. We, the Fire Marshal's office does take the firemen out for inspections. We do do joint training. Any time I have a firehouse, let's say, has a house that burned down for training, we do it together. Purchasing's done together, we ship into our company, other apparatus companies. I feel some of the stuff that's in that study doesn't portray what's really being done every single day. You had a twenty-year-old intern, so to speak, working at that company, doing a lot of the information, with a fire chief from another town gathering. Is it a good study? It's a study. It's the basis of what we should maybe be doing and should not be doing. I think that this generation we have here now is chipping away at some of the items you do have in that list. But, like Mr. Dickerson said, do you want to have a hundred and ten thousand dollars for a fire chief? Today, we shouldn't, because I think the gentleman we have up here, they're meeting all the needs that we need. Bulk purchasing, we really don't really buy anything bulk. A lot of our capital items, it almost picks up, besides toilet paper, tissues, we get that from the town, we get that from the same vendor. So, I think that when we keep referring back to the study, I think as a group, we might need to sit down and say, what really benefits the town we assign?
That's exactly what I...
Because I think the study is maybe what we should be doing, but financially, in this day and age, we cannot afford to do it.
So, I think to remove some of these questions, if we form the subcommittee or something else to go through that fire study, put the town's recommendations based on those recommendations, then we can stop having this conversation.
Yeah, because I mean, when we look at Flanders Firehouse and Niantic Firehouse, they're the same, but Chief, Chief Ricks might have ten Scott bottles, Chief Wardle might have twelve. Chief Ricks might have fifteen radios, Chief Wardle might have ten. So, that's why you might see some of the ocean numbers, and Chief Ricks might have more ladders than Chief Wardle. So, that's where you get the ocean numbers, that might be different, because you have the certain testing and certain stuff like that. This year, Chief Wardle could have twenty-four members, just throwing a number out there, Chief Ricks could have thirty. So, during that process of making sure everybody's certified, that's how your numbers are really skewed differently each year. Members, paid personnel, and all those items.
And that's why for us, it would be cleaner if we just talked about them all as an aggregate group, right? The East Line Fire Department has twenty-three Scotch air packs, they have. And then we don't have to get this, how come you got seven, he's got nine? And we spend a lot of time trying to figure out if we should figure this out.
That's well put.